...order, we ask everyone to stand and do a prayer. Is that all we can do? Just everybody?
That's it.
Okay. Well, we'll come back out to executive session. It's officially eight twenty right now. And in executive session, we had discussion only. There was nothing decided or anything there. And... Councilman Simon?
Here.
Councilman Wood?
Here.
Councilman Doughty? Councilwoman Bickers?
Here.
Councilman Fletcher? Mayor Fisher?
Here.
Corrigan Simon? Attorney here. All right. Approval of the man from May fourteenth, regular meeting. All right, anybody have anything? Have you seen anything? A motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I made a motion.
Take a motion to have a second. Saved by Michael. All those in favor, say five, say nine.
Five.
Any opposed, like a sign? So order. John, the financial statements from May?
Yep, so if you take a look at the month of May, we had a total income of sixty thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. expenditures for the month of seventy-five thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars and eight cents. For shortage for the month, fourteen thousand, four seventy-eight, nineteen. Most of that, if you look, some of that was aided by outside counsel with attorney Karen Miller. Everything else, PDA, Guardian, everything else is pretty much in order.
Any questions for John? If not, we entertain most of the receiving financial statements as presented.
So move.
So move by Jake, who has a second.
My second.
Saved by Melanie. All those in favor, say five, say nine.
Uh-huh.
Any opposed, like a sign? So order. All righty. Town fair, festival, and car show update?
We've got the trophies ordered. We got the kid stuff taken care of and the porta potties taken care of. We are working on getting some more vendors. We're only going to do twenty-five vendors this time. So we've pretty much got them filled out, but if somebody does have something that they want to put in, it's only going to be a one-day event. It's going to be August the sixteenth. And I think we're going to rock and roll because the car show should be really big this year because there's not many to do up and stuff like that in Charleston. And Nicole and I went to the meeting for the car show people. And so we got on their schedule, so we'll probably bring a lot of people in from different areas.
Awesome. Hopefully the weather holds us this year.
Yeah, hopefully.
It hasn't been too...
Just wait until...
You said you're wanting approximately twenty vendors?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Because we're expecting the car show to be so much more bigger that we can, when it's done.
And just to verify, we do have bands lined up and the schedules and...
Right now, we've got the Esquire's, Charles Pantry, and our group that played in here a couple of months ago.
Dixie Highway?
Yeah, the Dixie Highway. So that's the three. And then they'll stake them out, fill in a couple of disc singles or something like that. They've got three main players there. Esquire's will play three hours. So they'll pretty much take up probably six-thirty, nine-thirty, something like that.
Same where they were on the...
Right on.
The London Lenny schedules.
Yeah, they've played. So we'll get them and before that, we'll probably do pantry. And then we'll throw Dixie Highway in there and then we'll see about, you know, Jones or something like that. We'll add the pantry. And we want to start at...
That was going to be a question that I had because some of the vendors, like the car shows, are going to start registering at nine. They're usually here by eight. The vendors want to have, the few vendors want to have breakfast and stuff, sell them breakfast. So if anybody wants to come up by breakfast that morning, you know, he's going to have a lot of varieties of stuff. When are we setting off the streets actually? We're going to be back like the night before or what time?
We're shutting down that morning, early that morning.
What time can they start setting up?
We'll probably do it about six o'clock.
Okay, so anytime after six?
We start, we talked about starting music around noon, right? Kind of overlapping that with the car, into the car show?
Well, we said something about that, but then I didn't know if we wanted to try to do like kind of a DJ for a little while, a couple of hours or what? And, or do we want to start some bands, you know?
Well...
As long as we don't lose that crap, because that's, that was the issue last couple of times.
Yeah, as long as we, I've been there overlapping a little bit and I'll lose having breaks.
Well, but I mean, the car show is going to go from when, noon to when?
Uh, three.
Noon to three?
Well, no, it's actually going to go from nine-thirty or nine o'clock they start registering. And so they should be out there by three.
Okay.
You know, let's just say...
So we're going to hold them till three.
Yeah.
So you'll do the trophies and all that, two-thirty, three o'clock?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we talked about doing that at the break of the first and second band.
And usually, we probably don't want somebody playing during that.
Correct.
Right.
But we'll look at trying to maybe put somebody in there twelve to two or something like that.
Yeah, because we're going to, Nicole, when she gets back, we're going to have a meeting and actually kind of try to do a little agenda to see what, you know? And then that way we can decide the hours of when the bands are actually going to play and exactly when they're going to give the trophies out and all that.
So we'll find somebody to play twelve to two and then we'll start at maybe again about three-thirty. Because that way, you know, if they're out there doing the trophies and everything, then from there, we can kick off some...
Three-thirty to five-thirty and then six to nine?
Yeah, three-thirty really to nine-thirty. I always have somebody to keep on going. But we're going to have a little bit of, you know, in-between, you know, to get set up.
The Esquire's probably six to nine.
The Esquire's, six-thirty, nine-thirty.
Six to nine.
Yeah. Then we'll do pantry probably right before that.
Okay.
Maybe play four to six, something like that. Because we're going to have half-hours to get stuff down and set up. And then we'll have Dixie Highway before that. And then we might have to squeeze somebody else in there. I can do Chad Jones or something like that. Probably, you know, rude and stuff like that. So we'll do something there. All righty. Along with that, I did contact our legislator, Tressa Howell. And she went back and was able to, we were excluded this year for the West Virginia Culture and History money for the town festival. And she actually got us included again. So we do have another three thousand dollar grant that is due by June thirtieth to twenty-five. So I've got all the records from this past year. So I put that together and so we'll end up with another three thousand dollars to help out with the fair here in August. So we've got that, got that coming to us, another three thousand. So we'll be good there. Next thing we have on the agenda, underpass mural update. And Ms. Blue, thank you very much. I think everybody's got a copy. If you want to...
What, may I pass one around to...
Start to...
Yeah.
Pass it to her.
Yeah. If you want to start talking about it and tell us a little bit about it. You know, this is right now, you know, this is not within the town of Bell, so we can't really spend town funds on that. But, so I've got a, I think I've got a pretty much avenue for us to get some grant funds to do it all, so... And I think right now, everybody's okay with us doing it, so...
Okay. So we met with Mark, Mark and Bob and I, we met with Mr. Wheeler. And he, he answered that for us. He did say that it might be a problem putting a lot of buildings on, on, on the mural because it, then it kind of looks too busy and people don't see it. He pointed out coming through the, coming through the underpass that you can't hang around and look at it very much. So he, so he gave us, he gave us a few options. The one option on the one side is the canoes and the, and the four-wheelers and everything. And he thinks that probably is okay. And you guys have, you know, decided that's okay or not. And then the other side, that's what all the other options were for. He did a couple of different, and I'm sure he could do, you know, do a little bit more detail. But he gave you an idea of where the buildings would be and everything like that. And then on a completely other stance, he, he said the river. So he put the river on there too. So if you look at, if you look at ones where it, it's one on each side, you can see where he, he put the river on, on one and then he put the buildings on the other two. So both of the options, if you don't like them, you can always come back around. He can start, I mean, I don't know, like, we do the fun stuff, but he can start in July if we can, if you can do that, or it could be later in the fall. So that, that's where we're at with that. He does have a little strength in all the signs in the middle, but I think he did a good job of rendering, you know?
I think, I think leaving that middle open is actually perfect.
Well, we can't, we can't...
Yeah.
Yeah, we got to.
No, I agree, and that's what I mean.
No way to kind of move all them signs and paint or put something up and then get all those back up and everything else.
I personally like the bottom one.
Which is...
Yeah, I do too.
I like the river too. That's my personal favorite. I just think it, it just, it just shows the nature and the beauty of the town and... And we've got buildings on the other one, so, you know, I'm, I'm good with that, but that's up to you guys.
And then on the other side is pretty much the future, you know?
Yeah. So I mean... What was going for, what was the, you know, the four-wheelers and the canoe and kayak or whatever?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I like the bottom one best.
So I have to say, I really appreciate him for really, like, he's really trying to help us, you know, to, to get what we need.
Okay, we need to wait until we have confirmed funding before we make a motion or anything?
I need, I need somebody to tell me what we're looking at, what we want. And then we'll need to go back to Mr. Wheeler, try to get some dollars and cents for what it cost us.
I like the bottom one.
And then from there, I need to contact like Charleston area labs and see what's available to, to pick up.
Did the Comore say anything about helping out with that or...
The only thing he told them down there the one day would be that they would paint it to start out and everything like that. They did say they'd do that.
Put the under cover on or whatever.
That's a big help right there.
Yeah.
I like the, on the second page, I like the bottom one, the one with the river and then the, the four-wheelers or...
That's kind of that picture right up there.
Yes.
Follow the wall.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what's out there is that picture. And that's what we talked about, trying to do something with the plant. Then on the other side, we were talking about the, the buildings and, you know, maybe you want an ATV, UTV, and canoe and stuff like that. The one thing we exclude there would be the buildings.
Which we have buildings on the other one, so...
Yeah, but we were just talking about, you know, the funeral home, the old city hall, the power station, the bank, things like that that's been around here for years. But I'm good. Do you all need to just tell me which one you want, then we can go back and get a price and then from there, then I'll go find us some other.
Sounds like most of you guys like the bottom ones, huh?
They like the bottom?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, you want to go back to Mr. Wheeler and ask him to price it out for us?
I will do that.
And we'll do that and move forward. And then you let, you let me know what we need, money grounds, and I'll shoot to get that. I might go find it.
Hopefully so. I do think it will, it will really make an impact, you know, coming up, coming under the underpass like that and seeing that, we really need that. Oh, yeah, it was amazing. It was so much fun.
And there, well, talk about that a minute. What is longevity, you know? What is longevity?
You know what, I, I have forgotten, but it's a long time. As long as, as long as we do what we're supposed to. They, they have a seal on it that helps against the sun and fading and everything like that, so...
That does flood though, right? How far does the floodwaters come up? Will it be under the floodwaters?
Yeah, I don't think it gets up to that side.
Does it go that high?
No, because that's kind of aiming up. I don't think it gets onto that sidewalk.
No, it's not under the underpass, it's on the wall.
Yeah, but floodwaters.
The ones you're saying is, he can, he can lift it up if he needs to, you know? But it should be fine.
Now, that might be something, or something, I'm sure he's from around here, so he knows it floods down there, but...
Well, I'll mention it to him. We can, we can actually find out where the floodwater hits, so he can adapt.
It comes up a foot or two over that sidewalk.
Does it? Okay. Okay, so, so then we need to adapt.
Shrink it.
Yeah, yeah.
Is he the one, is he the one that did the murals down on the buildings and he's outside for it?
Yeah.
Okay.
He also did the one down here for Bill?
Yeah, I knew he did that one, yeah. And maybe in your front lawn, lawn mower.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, he, he really does a nice job.
Yeah, and they're still missing five, I think, I mean, they're still a little crazy.
Yeah, they are.
Did he do molden?
Yes. Yeah.
He did molden.
And it really floods down there.
Yeah.
That's true, so...
Well, that's a good point. That's a good point, that we need to look for that, you know?
Yeah, and I, I'm sure moldens is probably being close. If not, under one.
Probably.
And we can check that and see.
Yeah. Well, theirs looked all right because we went by it today and I was looking at it, so theirs looked fine today.
Yeah. I'm just, I mean, for me, it's just a, give me a price, what we're looking for.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get...
What we got, what we got to find.
Well, I'm sure it's got some waterproofing on it because it's...
Well, he does, he does, he does. But, yeah, okay.
All righty. Next thing is the summer street hour.
We are going to do it. We're going to have it, we're going to start July the eighth, that's on a Tuesday. We're going to do every Tuesday up through August, the second Tuesday in August. So that gives us like six weeks basically for the kids. We're starting late because of getting scheduled as far as somebody to do it, but we got it taken care of now. So we will do that up until the second week of August.
Every Tuesday?
Every Tuesday, from six, six, six-thirty.
And that's on the... Sheet's paper is going out to the residents.
Yes, it should be. Then we get to...
Yeah, I looked at it, did something. All righty, next thing is the William Bradford Memorial. And I think we had some unexpected information. So Ms. Blue, I'll let you give the marks, kind of finish that.
We did. It turned out not to be what they actually said. And what, and I actually read it a few times and it said that they were offering. And so in actual fact, they weren't giving us anything free. So the, the, the actual tree and the plant would be over sixteen hundred dollars and then we have to pay for transport. So we don't really have a good place for it. I mean, we were really struggling to find a place where we could put it that it would, you know, it would actually say something. So, you know, my opinion is that we should use the money on something else because you're probably looking at, I don't know how much the freight would be. The, the tree is like forty-foot tall and it has to go on a flatbed. So that would be really expensive, so... And they don't know because it's different places that they send you to. So, I mean, my thinking is we should spend the money on something else. I mean, it wouldn't be, to me, it wouldn't be groovy, but, I mean, that's, again, up to you guys, you know?
I told Ms. Blue that we were wanting to try to maybe replace that sign over there, the Centennial Park sign. And maybe we can go back to look at the Iron Beaver about trying to do something new for that sign. That sign's been over there since like nineteen sixty-three, when we had the Centennial here in Bell. And it was done, I think, right about that same time or maybe shortly after. But that, that sign's not in real great shape, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's got to be.
Maybe we just do that and just have the Iron Beaver make up a new sign for that and, and do that and get that, you know, spent and done something there. And we'll probably come out ahead with not transporting and then paying sixteen hundred some dollars. So, so, and let's, let's maybe consider that, so what's, what's the pleasure?
I think, I mean, the Iron Beaver guy, he does, you know, excellent work, so I think, you know...
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Town of Bell, Centennial Park or something like that? Do something similar to what we did on the street signs, welcome to Bell? Give something there, so... So if that's good, we'll do that, so we'll move from there. Next order of business is new business and roof bids. We've got three bids to consider tonight. And so... We can then, everybody hold on to your seats because I think these are going to be quite expensive. Roof's never been replaced, so...
How long is this building?
Huh?
How long is this building?
Nineteen eighty-two, thirty. Started being built before that, but then it's moved in and everything. Actually, E.L. Harris built the building. Harris Brothers did the roof years ago. Harris Brothers is still a business. They've given us the first bid.
Are they guaranteeing it's called license on this one?
No, this is a, they're, they're guaranteeing, I think it was a twenty-year roof warning. But the roof areas, we reviewed the roof areas of Bell, police and town hall buildings and found all rust to be the old build-up type roofing, which consists of layers of asphaltic roofing with the gravel surfacing. We would recommend removing all roofing material down to the roof decks and then installing insulation and new EPDM membrane over the existing system. This is a concrete deck, a metal deck, and a tectum deck on this building. The scope of work would be as follows. Remove all layers of roofing down to the decks and hallway. Over existing decks mechanically fasten, adhere one layer of two-inch ISO roof insulation. Over the insulation, install a fully adhered point oh-six-oh EPDM membrane roof system. Install the new flashings around all vents, fans, rooftop units, pipes, drains, et cetera. Fabricate and install new canor fascia metal at roof perimeters. The, the capping and everything by the roof perimeter. Furnish manufacturer's twenty-year roof warning. Our estimate for this work would be the sum of three hundred sixty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. Three hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. This does not include a tapered insulation systems. It's a, just a flat system like what's on the roof pretty much. But if tapered system was preferred, this would be discussed further and project would be rebid with this information being utilized. Pretty much the roof we got today, three hundred sixty-five thousand...
And you said twenty-year.
Twenty-year. This roof, this one is from Par Roofing out of Huntington. P-A-R Roofing.
Is Harris out of Trumpson?
Huh?
Harris Brothers?
Harris Brothers and Trumpson, yeah. All righty, Par Roofing proposal to the Town of Bell, Town Hall Roof Replacement. We are very pleased to propose the following bid for the name above. Remove and legally dispose of existing gravel, BUR, insulation. Inspect the areas with metal decking, replace and damage or deteriorated decking at an additional twenty-two dollars and fifty cents per square foot. Re-roof with the following materials. Install base layer of one and a half pi-some and narrow rate insulation with screws and plates with low rise foam adhesive. Install one-eighth per foot tapered insulation to create positive water drainage. Raise all curves, penetrations, and gas lines if needed to allow for new insulation thickness. Fully adhere point oh-six-oh mil EPDM over the insulation with manufacturer's standing bonding adhesive. Remove and dispose of all existing edge metal. Install new wood neller on wood, on roof perimeter to contain new insulation height. Shop, fabricate, and install twenty-four gauge steel gravel stop with canor finished roof perimeter. Flash all curves and penetration with pressure-sensitive flashing. Install walk pads at all roof area points and under all HVAC service doors. Contractor will furnish all labor, materials, permits, and remove all trash and debris from job site. Issue twenty-year NDL watertight warranty from Carlisle Construction Materials. The total cost on this one is three hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars.
May I ask a question?
Huh?
May I ask a question?
Let me read the third one.
Right, I was questioning that bid right there. He said if he had to replace anything, it would be twenty-two dollars per foot. Is that less than three hundred and sixty-one?
Oh, yeah, that'd be additional, yeah.
But Harris Brothers was all inclusive, right?
Harris Brothers what?
Was all inclusive.
Oh, it, it is, but I'm sure that if there's place within my battle, they come back and say, hey, that's an additional charge, is what I would imagine. And right now, places that we know is leaking really is within the gym. And that we know we've had spots, so there could be some areas there that may need some stuff done. So, you know, we'll see. The last roof bid is from Tri-State Roofing in Sheepdale. The proposal for the Bell Town Hall Roof Replacement. Thank you for inviting Tri-State Roofing and Sheepdale to provide a proposal for the above-mentioned project. Please find below our scope of work and pricing based upon our most recent site visit and conversation with owner representatives. Scope of work is remove and properly dispose of the build-up roof system, the BUR, to expose the roof deck. Set three-inch poly-isoe insulation in manufacturer's low-rise foam adhesive over the existing roof deck. Install adhered point oh-six-oh EPDM roof system. All details, flashings, terminations for manufacturer's current specifications. Fabricate and install new edge metal made from twenty-four gauge canor finished steel with continuous cleat made from twenty-two gauge galvanized steel. Fabricate and install new counter flashings of wall... Fabricate and install new counter flashings of walls and units made from twenty-four gauge galvanized steel. Install walkway pads at roof area location and splash pads. Provide manufacturer's twenty-year labor and material warranty upon completion. Uh, their price and says also notes, there's no allowance for asbestos abatement, including as its proposal. If asbestos-contained materials are found, additional costs will apply. Any damaged or deteriorated decking will be removed, replaced and repaired on an additional time and material basis. According to Par Roofing, they did check for asbestos and the samples they took did not include any asbestos. So I don't think that that would come into play, but. Uh, their price is three hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
And I'm assuming that's a twenty-year as well?
Twenty-year labor and material warranty upon completion. So all three's twenty years. We're not gonna get out of this new one what we did out of the old one. Don't, don't look like it's gonna happen.
It'll last a month.
We won't be here in twenty years, right?
No, you can go care, I'm sure.
Yeah. Uh, so we're looking, you know, at the, uh, at the three and, uh, I think really, you know, we had one that put a inch and a half insulation. We had one that put two inch, and we had one here that put three inch.
Trust me on three, right?
Yeah.
So what is the, I mean, I know like insulation's insulation, but is there a difference as far as the roof goes? Would that make a difference? And then holding up longer or anything?
It's probably gonna hold the heat into the building, the higher insulation you got. The EPDM roof system is all the same, point oh six oh, which is gonna be over top of the, uh, uh, the insulation and everything that you put down.
What was Harris Brothers, any questions on that?
Harris Brothers was two inch. And, uh, Par Roofing was one and a half inches.
Well, I, I think personally, um, I mean Harris Brothers is the middle quote. Three sixty-five eight hundred.
That's who built it originally too, right?
So, I had to, I think, put this roof on originally with, uh, E.L. Harris and someone that did the building itself. That built this building.
I, I hate to spend the money, but I mean, this council or the next council, it has to be done.
And I'm gonna say.
You gotta fix the interest.
I'm gonna say right now, if we don't get this roof done, we're probably gonna go ahead and shut the gym and haze him down.
Well, Linda, you know this as anybody, because you're, you're, you're doing the cleanup stuff.
Constant. It's not the rain, it's
Sure.
The heat melts.
What's the heat, that's the asphalt, uh, that's leaking down and leaking onto the floor and everything else.
And staining like rain.
Yeah.
Well, I make a motion that we accept the Harris Brothers bid of three hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred dollars.
Got a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
No, second.
Second by Melanie, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, like so? So, or? On those five Harris Brothers, to come up and get to work.
Did they give us an estimate on when they might start?
Most of them had said it's probably, uh, two to three months out before they would start. So it's not gonna be anytime soon.
They're, they're not gonna show up on the.
We should be able to get, we should be able to get it, get it done before winter, then, right?
Oh, yeah. I don't see anything stopping to be done by winter time, but it's not gonna be done next week. Yeah, they've all got, BS going on, they've all got, you know, there's a lot of hail damage and everything else all around up down the valley, all the way from here to hunting. Probably up toward, yeah, Smithers or Montgomery. So I think every one of these companies are, are pretty busy right now. So we'll do, Harris Brothers move on. Uh, through all the invoices, everything, personnel issues. Uh, I'll bring something up here in executive session shortly. Items from the mayor, uh, was asked about French drains, especially at the burial. Uh, that burial, uh, the French drain over it will be actually looked at and done on Wednesday, tomorrow. So it is slated to finally be done. Uh, they have painted the two wings down there on the burial, if you all seen that. The French drains have been done at the bank and they've also done French drains up here at the Veterans Memorial. So those things are done and, uh, and then the next thing I'll mention is especially talking about getting the roof replacement and everything, another thing that came up and we had a regional intergovernmental council meeting this past Thursday. I was there and one of the gentlemen that works there walked up to me before we left and said there's a energy efficiency and conservation block grant. Uh, the round four application deadline is August the fifteenth. And that's actually to look at our outside of our building, uh, meaning windows and doors. Uh, there's a, uh, an application that would have to be done for this. Uh, but he's pretty sure, he's actually already been to a few towns around the, the valley here. And it's available to local governments and nonprofits in the state of West Virginia. And through this program, uh, they'll look to put in, replace your windows and doors, so. So actually, he came up on Friday, uh, talked to him, we walked around the building and looked at the doors and the windows and he said, hey, what you would get are some double pane windows. You'll get some better, uh, E-rated, uh, uh, doors and everything else compared to what we've got in now. When the building was built, you know, it was built, you know, a long, long time ago. Uh, utilities weren't high, uh, they're, they're raising each year and you all know it yourself by your homes and everything, so. I told him I'd bring it to council tonight and if it's agreeable with you all, probably need to entertain a motion that given me permission to go ahead and uh, apply for this energy efficient conversa- uh, convers- con- conservation block grant. Uh, and to work forward to getting new windows and doors put in our building. All on the outside, wouldn't replace anything, internal doors like these or anything like that. But everything outside it would replace.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Melanie, do we have a second, a second by Michael? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, like so? Alrighty, I'll work on that one. Well, the next thing is, we've got a card here. Thanks for being so nice. Dear Mayor and Council, thank you so much for the bonus, it was very unexpected and appreciated. May God bless you all, Linda, and BS, I love my job. Linda, thank you very much, and we appreciate you taking the time to do all that and, uh, you know, it really does shine back here. I think everybody going in down there has, uh, made a lot of good compliments on what was done and, uh, you know, the work and everything that you're talking in there, so. Definitely agree. Uh, I gave everybody a copy of the West Virginia Health Right, uh, literature and they had done this before, they'd come out and set their mobile clinic up here in Belle across the, the way over here on the parking area. Free services offered, referrals, Narcan training, rapid HIV, rapid Hep C testing. Uh, card offered, you know, with testing and no, no, uh, needle changes or anything like that. Uh, everything that they had done in the past is pretty much what they're gonna do with us from here on out. And they are set up to come up on Friday, July the eleventh. We do have, uh, one of the brochures that go out in our mailings is, uh, July first. And they'll be here from eleven to one. So, you know, anybody looking for any testing or just clinical work, have them come up and see them. Uh, West Virginia Health Right pretty much does everything free of charge, so, uh, it's a pretty good, uh, pretty good thing for our citizens and everything else. And the only, last thing I've got is we were talking about the flooding. And D.O.H., uh, actually, I'm talking to Tressa Howell too. Uh, D.O.H. is actually going to do some grants on, uh, uh, looking at flood areas around our, uh, county, around Canal County. And they are going to look at the, uh, Kimore's Plan underpass, I'll still say Cupboard Plan underpass. Uh, but they will come up and look at that, they'll look at the, uh, the drainage that's down there, they'll actually, uh, run some cameras through it. Uh, do some video, videotaping and everything else to see if this drainage is just plugged up, if it's got a lot of dirt in it. Things like that and see what needs to be done to get this replaced. And, uh, so I've been talking to her, been talking to, uh, D.O.H. guy for about two months now. Finally, they've decided that they're gonna put some money together to this, these projects around the county and do this. So I think it's some good news for us there, so. So I don't know, maybe I'll run that bureau to the body. Alrighty, next thing, anything from Ray, Ray? Items from council, Melanie?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of questions here. One, since the kitchen is pretty much done, other than just painting the paint, the cabinets and sinks and stuff, do we, or well, can we, um, talk about maybe getting a gallon or maybe two? Linda says she thinks a gallon will do it, uh, just to paint where it hasn't been painted. So we can kind of finish that out.
Uh, that's fine. Who's willing to paint it, Linda?
Linda's willing to paint it.
Your girl paint it, oh, okay.
We can just let the painter paint it.
She does a good job.
I think that, that sounds great.
So just get with Adam and.
Yeah, just find out what, what, you know, what we need to come out.
Because we're talking about a pale yellow.
Is she yellow?
No. Because that'll kind of set everything else off, so. And the second thing is, and, and some of the kids I've known, some of the kids I don't, I've seen a little boy riding a mini scooter that almost been hit twice. Um, we've got a lot more scooters out here, electrical, some of them, and some of them are motorized scooters, and none of these kids have helmets on. Is there something we can do as far as enforcing that? I mean, they're, they're considered motorized vehicles.
John, you know the, what's that say? Regulation on that?
They're supposed to have helmets and so forth on it. It's just how strict do you guys want us to be on it, unfortunately?
And especially that little guy that rides that little motorcycle.
We had one that just missed, I mean, missed the back of our truck by less than.
I've gotten several complaints on it, I've actually spoke to that kid before.
And he's so. Two foot.
He's so short and the bike's so short, that if you have a truck and you're setting a height, you cannot see him.
The first, the first step is to go talk to the parents and then you'll have to cite the parents if they continue to allow them to. It's just, it's just how strict do you guys want to be?
I mean, I'm just, you know, there's a lot of brain injuries that happen and things like that and these kids at least, the minimum we should enforce is, you know, have helmets, as far as I'm concerned.
Will you take care of that, John?
I will do, sir.
Okay, alrighty.
Um, other than that, the twenty-seventh is our next band. Um, it's gonna be the partners' band, they've got all new people, they, they told me. Uh, we will not be serving food, we'll be serving just chips, drinks and desserts that night because everybody's on vacation, um, and we don't have a whole lot of help. However, we have been having a pretty good turnout. If you've never been there, you ought to come out and five dollars to get in. However, there's a lot of nice bands, I mean, where else can you go for three hours for five dollars?
Is it twenty-seventh?
Yeah, twenty-seventh. Uh, doors open at six, if you get here a little bit early and it's pouring down the rain, I promise you I'm letting you in. But other than that, I mean, we've, we've been pretty much holding our end as far as the door money pays for the band. And so as long as we have enough people coming in and we can continue to do it. And we're booked up through November as far as bands. And I do have a couple of schedules with me, if anybody would like one, to see what bands are gonna be there. There's the dates and everything that goes around, if anybody wants to keep. Yeah, there's also one out there on the boulevard.
There's one on the front door as well.
But it's just. You know, it's, it's good, nice, clean fun and, and a lot of people, especially the older people, but we're getting a lot of young people in here too now starting to dance, so. And some of them are pretty good dancers. So, sure, you go have to practice up there, girl.
I would, I would watch out. Good, come here and cut the rug.
Other than that, Dave, I think that's.
That it?
I think that's all I've got.
John?
Yeah, we're going to, uh, we're gonna look at hiring summer help for the street department.
Adam has not said anything to me, uh, so I don't know, I'll ask him and see. Do you have anybody that?
I don't, I don't have anybody, I just wanted. I know we normally talk about it, I think either Mayor or.
I'll ask him, see what he says. Is it, oh, yeah?
Yep.
I do know, uh, I, I, I put a call in too, I was talking with Mark home. And I said to me, you would like to try to schedule our audits. Uh, Ms. Woods did call me. She is supposed to be working on that, see about getting our audits and everything completed. Had brought up to date. Uh, actually, there was a new law passed that, that's coming out from underneath the state auditor's office. Did you know that? The audits, and it was gonna go along with the state legislative audit.
Really?
Uh, so that's supposed to be done within the next month.
That's great, while they're working on it.
Well, she told me she'd work on it. She's the one that called me about the bingo stuff.
When I talked to the auditor's office, they said that they were way behind with all the volunteer fire departments that are.
They can't get on them. I think it's maybe some of those changes to take all these through the state. So I'll see what she says and we'll try to maybe get, get an audit scheduled.
Yeah, I'll get it done in the next twelve months.
Yeah, yeah, need to. So, alrighty, that's it?
Yep.
Jacob?
Nothing for me.
Nothing, okay. Alrighty, approval for visitors to address council, need a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Jacob, you have a second? Second by Michael. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Alrighty, anybody around?
What's the rumor about selling the sewer plant?
What's the rumor what?
Keep hearing one about selling the sewer plant.
It's just that.
It's a rumor, I don't know who started it, but, uh, what we're looking for is an operator. But nothing was ever put out about selling the sewer plant, I don't know if somebody got that.
We are talking to a company called Viola, which was recommended to us by, um, Thrasher, our engineering, uh, company. And they're basically a company that likes to have the operator. I know, uh, Mingo County uses them, Williamson uses them.
They do it in Williamson, West Virginia, they not only do the sewer plant, but they do all the street department work for the flood wall and everything in Williamson. So they'll do garbage service, they'll do sewer service, they'll do it all. So, uh, that's, that's who we're talking to and, uh, we've gotten them a lot of information. They've not ever given the surprise back, but, uh, yep, it's being discussed because we can't find an operator. And we still got Kevin, somebody said we don't have an operator at all, that's another rumor that's been flying around. We still have Kevin coming in, working almost every evening and working the weekends and everything else. We're still paying him a salary and everything else, so. So that's, that's, that's the, the truth of all the banks. Anybody else?
I wouldn't say what Mel said, there's a little girl that rests on my house. There's a little girl that rides by my house on an electric.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. It's a little boy that, but he's got on hair.
Well, so, a, a little girl.
Yeah.
A child, and flies. And like she said, just so low you can't see him. There's somebody else that rides by my house on an electric scooter. And he went up by my house, it was a, it looked like it was a grown man. Went up by my house yesterday, he absolutely climbed. He couldn't hurt anybody behind him if there was been anybody behind him.
Colin, you got that? Colin Walls is on the job. Anything, Linda? Alan?
I'm just going to be here, I'll be.
Joanne, anything? Mr. Morse, anything? Paul, you and your wife, anything? Ramona? Rosemary? Sister Granny?
Nope.
Dawn, anything? Alrighty.
It's probably easy, wasn't it?
Hey, easy, easy, I like easy. But, uh, alrighty, so we'll, uh, we've got a couple things to discuss in executive session, so we'll need a motion to, to end the executive session. So moved by Michael. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jacob. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like say? So, or. We'll ask everyone to thank Jacob. Is that all we got? Just everybody?
That's it.
Okay, well, we'll, uh, come back out to executive session. It's officially eight-twenty right now, and, uh, uh, in executive session, we had discussion only. There was nothing decided or anything there. And, uh, with that being said, I think, uh, we're to the conclusion of the meeting, so we'll entertain a motion adjourned.
I will.
Okay, a motion adjourned. We have a second. Second by Michael. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll see you all next month.